Okay, guys. The regularly scheduled City Council meeting and successor agency meeting of the city of San Dimas will come to order. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order dated March 17, 2020, the City Council is authorized to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make meetings accessible electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address the legislative body. All Brown Act provisions that require the physical presence of City Councilmen or public for City Council meetings are waived. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, do we need a roll call since we're all present? Okay. Prior to oral communications, Councilman Ebner would like to make a statement.
Oh, just real quickly, you might notice that there's a Plexiglas window here between me and Ryan. Solid as can be. Now, we're going to do a magic trick. But so this is just a way of doing a little more separation and distancing and all that kind of stuff. But one of the keys here is to see if this would work. I'm temporarily sitting over here, so I wouldn't interfere with everybody else. But one of the keys is to see if I can be heard by the rest of the council. So I will try to enunciate and speak into the microphone, and at the end of the meeting, we can get the results of the test and see if people have been able to hear me on the dais here. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, John. Oral communications. Member of the public are invited to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from taking and engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to as staff or set for discussion at a later date. If you desire to address the City Council on any item on this agenda other than the scheduled public hearing item, you may do so at this time or ask to be heard when the agenda item is considered. Comments on public hearings items will be considered when that item is scheduled for discussion. The public comment period is limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker shall be limited to a three-minute session. If at the end of 30 minutes you have something to say, we will refer you to the last portion of the council meeting where you would have five minutes. So at the end of 30 minutes, we're going to move on, and we'll go from there. As of this moment, we have none. We'll give it about two or three minutes to see if anybody calls in. Go ahead, John.
Thank you for calling. Your three minutes starts now.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Savannah Spelman. I have been a resident of San Dimas for 23 years, and I'm also a skateboarder at the local skate park Pioneer Park. For the past three years, I love this town, but I especially love Pioneer Park because I've never felt more welcomed and accepted by a community before. And our skate park here in San Dimas is a landmark for our local youth. And today, I would like to introduce you to my idea for the San Dimas Skate Park beautification project. While most tasks in this project are small and easily fixed through the skateboarding community, I argue that the city consider investing in light fixtures for our skate parks. And in this proposal, I will outline most common concerns for the skate park project. Keeping this park open to a later time affects adding lighting fixtures and the cost of the lighting fixtures. I'm also going to send you guys an email so that you can read all of this. I don't think I'll have enough time to propose it, but I'm hoping you can open this to our next City Hall meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. About 30 seconds more. John, do we have anything? No more. Okay. Seeing that we have no more callers at this time, we'll go into the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless members of the City Council request separate discussion. Resolutions read by title, further readings are waived, passage and adoption recommended as follows.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar is passed as presented. Other business, successor agency, consideration of an exclusive negotiating agreement, ENA, with Pioneer Square LLC for the development of mixed-use project at property located at 344 West Bonita Avenue, 108 North Cataract Avenue, and 112 North Cataract Avenue.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. City Council members, Brad McKinney, Antrim City Manager. In June 2019...
Excuse me, I'm going to have to recuse myself for this matter since I own property near the project.
Councilman Ebner is going to recuse himself. He owns property near the location. John, don't rest.
In June 2019, the San Dimas Successor Agency, with assistance of Cosmont Realty Real Estate Services, issued an initial offering for the sale of the plus or minus 3.57 acre property at 344 West Bonita Avenue. The agency originally received three developer proposals and/or letters of interest for acquisition and/or development of the property. The agency, staff, and Cosmont Realty completed a detailed evaluation of the proposals and letters of interest submitted and conducted interviews as part of the evaluation process. Pioneer Square was ultimately selected to advance to the next phase of the evaluation process. The proposed exclusive negotiation agreement, or ENA, is an agreement between successor agency and city and the developer specifying a range of time where the party shall exclusively negotiate in good faith to arrive at a final project plan and conveyance instrument. The ENA period legally binds the agency or city to not negotiate with third parties regarding the property, and it requires the developer to conduct property due diligence work and complete a series of reports, studies, and plans regarding the project's scope and feasibility. During the ENA, the parties will evaluate the developer's proposed plan and financial feasibility for design and building a mixed-use project that's proposed to include approximately 44 sale housing units, townhouses or flats, 28,000 square feet of retail and commercial space, including possible bookstore, dining, small grocer, creative office space, health and exercise, and a use of 15,000 square feet of office or flex space. It would include a boutique hotel with approximately 60 to 80 rooms, with a lobby, restaurant, bar services, pool, and rooftop bar, 200 subterranean and semi-subterranean parking spaces, and the design elements that would heighten the pedestrian experience and connect Pioneer Square to Pioneer Park, and install long-term sustainability drought-resistant landscape improvements. The ENA will enable the city to identify and assess the potential public benefits and new city revenues, as well as potential private benefits for the city and the region. The initial ENA term is for 120 calendar days and may be extended for two additional 90-day periods at the developer's request and with the written approval of the city manager or executive director. The developer will have 90 days from the ENA effective date to complete its due diligence site work, which will include the studies, reports, and analysis to determine the feasibility of the project. The ENA calls for the developer to acquire the property for $3 million, subject to confirmation of this price through a fair market value appraisal. The appraisal may account for some specific property constraints, which may include public improvements and environmental conditions, in addition, potential storm drain relocation work, soils mitigation issues, which will also be considered and may generate price adjustments as part of their appraisal. The land purchase price or adjustments made by the appraisal of the property's market value will be subject to approval by the Los Angeles Fifth District Consolidated Countywide Oversight Board. The developer will be responsible for financing and building all onsite improvements required by the project. The developer will pay for other necessary public improvements, including all city fees incurred for processing the project. The developer will be required to complete a minimum of four different deposits per the ENA. A deposit of $25,000 within five days of the ENA effective date to reimburse the city agency third-party costs and expenditures. Additional $25,000 deposit within five days of the effective date of the ENA, which is nonrefundable and released to the city, but applicable to the purchase price no later than five days after the expiration of the due diligence period from the developer. These funds are nonrefundable except for in the case that the agency or city defaults or the agency or city fails to approve the executive or execute the covenants instrument or they fail to gain the oversight board's approval of the project. Another $25,000 would be deposited within five days of the oversight's board approval of the conveyance instrument. And within five days of the conveyance instrument, the developer will deposit additional $50,000 to reimburse the city for third-party costs to complete the SEQA documents. There is no provisions in the ENA that commit the developer to buy the property or develop the project. The ENA also does not require the city to sell the property or approve the project. The ENA provides the city with discretion to reject the project or the conveyance instrument. During the ENA, the developer cannot assign its rights or obligations under the ENA without the city's consent, except for permitted affiliates. Once the conveyance instrument is executed, the city has approved the project, and the city has issued a certificate of occupancy for the project, the developer may convey the property and project without the city's consent. There was one question that somebody brought up on if the addresses at 108 and 112 North Cataract should be South Cataract, and staff confirmed before this that the addresses that are in this ENA are correct. It's 108 and 112 North Cataract Avenue. With that, staff recommends the City Council take the following actions. In approving the exclusive negotiation agreement between the successor agency to the former San Dimas Redevelopment Agency and Pioneer Square LLC, and authorize the executive director to execute the ENA in a form acceptable to the city attorney on behalf of the successor agency. Both Larry Cosmont from the Cosmont team and Michael Deaton from Pioneer Square are on the conference call and available for any questions that the council may have. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, counsel. Questions? Okay, seeing there's no questions. This is one of those things that we don't normally take oral communications, but we will open it up for a few minutes of oral communications, limiting each speaker to John, do you see anybody?
No.
Shall we give him another two minutes?
No, two minutes is enough.
Oh.
Okay, seeing that are none, we'll bring it back to the council for comments.
Well, I'd like to start off by saying that I just want to express my thanks to the folks where this started, frankly, Dennis and Emmett, that history as it relates to this property would show that the city for a long time had worked to do something with this property, and there were a lot of challenges with this particular piece of property. And at one point, the city did enter into an exclusive negotiation agreement with another organization, considering a big hotel. And subsequently, following that ENA and some open-mindedness, I guess, on behalf of the members of council as a whole, we took a step back and we really kind of looked at some other alternatives, and we engaged Cosmont. And I think that I just wanted to sincerely say thank you, understanding that this obviously is just a step in a different direction to be able to explore other viable options and prove viability. But I think it's momentous and a milestone in the context of finding someone with a lot of community engagement and involvement, as we've all heard from various members of the community. And I think that we all listened to get to where we're at right now. And so to the PSQ team, to the Cosmont team, to the city staff, that I think has taken a lot of phone calls, and everyone collectively has heard a lot about this, I think everyone's done great. And so with that, I would make a motion to approve the recommendations as proposed by staff.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Also, I have a statement to make.
Yes, sir.
This is extremely exciting for the city to have gone this far, but it's a long ways from being done, and I think that we're all committed to it, and hopefully the community understands the process, and with any luck, it will happen.
This is a big step towards that. Eric?
I'll just echo what Dennis said. Again, one small step, but I am certainly one of the people that's looking forward to not having a dirt lot there, and I hope that this all works out and we can, you know, kind of revitalize our downtown area there. I think it's a good opportunity for us.
I too want to thank the council for, this has been a long road just to get here. But I also want to thank the members of the community that have taken a very active role in meeting and talking with people and bringing the community together with a project that I think we're all going to be proud of. I had the opportunity to speak recently with the developer, and we had a good conversation, and I'm convinced that he is dedicated to putting this program, I mean, you're talking millions and millions of dollars. So he's saying, "San Dimas, I can do this for you. I can deliver." And after my conversation with him and Larry Cosmont, I am convinced that this project will go forward, but you have to remember, as has been said up here already, it's steps. And sometimes it sounds like baby steps, and it seems like it's taken a while, but look where we're at today. It looks like this project potentially can move forward, and we'll see it. So with that, I would be more than supportive of this project. I'll call for a vote.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just interject one piece, and I think to clarify, or at least to say for myself, I just want to be clear to the community, while I'm supportive of the ENA and the motion that's before us, there is a number of public hearings in process that will move forward through this as this, frankly, it's not even an application yet. So I just want the public to know, we're not putting the cart before the horse, if you will, and there will be a number of opportunities and times for public input, review, and even approval or disapproval by the council and planning commission, everybody else. So it's just noting that the negotiation agreement for the successor agency and where we're at today is huge for moving towards resolving this property and bringing some new invigorated hope into the city.
In the way this agreement reads, it's that we'll make another major step in 90 days. They have some requirements that they have to complete. I am sure this council is dedicated to try to bring this forward, but I also want to make sure, and echo what Ryan said, each of these are steps, and at any point, something could happen, and we will hope it won't, but each day brings us closer to Pioneer Square. And I think that we all want to thank the community for the fairness that they've given us to give us an opportunity to get this far into the process, and I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have an ENA with Cosmont and Michael Deaton and Associates. That's worth a gavel. John, you'd like to come back in? I know you had your ear up against...
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Other business, City Council, conditional settlement and release agreement with Southwest Voters Registration Education Project regarding the alleged violation of California Voters' Right Act and resolution declaring intentions of transition from at-large to a district-based city council elections. Staff or city, who's doing it?
Mayor, City Council, our city attorneys, going to address this item.
Okay. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor and council. We're here on this item tonight because the city, as you all know, elects its city council members in an at-large election system, which means that regardless of where the candidates for city council reside in the city and regardless of where any voters reside, all of the voters in the city vote for all of the seats on the city council when we have our city council elections. As many, many cities in California that have at-large council elections have received over the past decade or so, San Dimas, on March 23 of this year, has now also received a letter from an attorney named Kevin Schenkman alleging that the city's at-large election system for city council seats is a violation of state... system for city council seats is a violation of state law, specifically a state law named the California Voting Rights Act. And Mr. Schenkman alleges that the city's at-large system of voting for council members abridges the rights of Latino voters in the city, and he claims that his client, the Southwest Voter Registration Education Project, has San Dimas city residents that are some of its members and that are bringing, that have directed him to write this letter about our election system here in San Dimas. When a city receives a letter like this, that starts off a specific process under state law where the city has to make a decision within a 45-day period, and then within a 90-day period after that, whether to transition to a different kind of election system other than an at-large system. And the overwhelming majority of the time, if this gets into court, what's ordered is a by-district election system for members of the city council. What that would mean is that the city council holds public hearings, a minimum of four public hearings, for the public to consider maps of the city with district lines drawn. And in our city, it would presumably be four different districts because presumably the council will want to keep our directly elected mayor. The council would hold four different public hearings for the public to consider various district maps, select a map, and then adopt an ordinance transitioning to district elections beginning in the next election, which would be 2022. Under the state law process, after we receive that letter, if the city transitions to districts and adopts that ordinance within the 90-day safe harbor period, then the city is only required to pay a maximum of $30,000 in attorney's fees to the attorney who wrote the letter to the city, which in this case is Kevin Schenkman. On the other hand, if within that 90-day safe harbor period, the city decides not to adopt an ordinance transitioning to district elections, then the attorney is allowed to file a lawsuit against the city alleging that our at-large system of voting violates the Voting Rights Act. And there is no cap on the amount of attorney's fees that the plaintiff in that lawsuit can get awarded, and that the city then has to pay. In other cities that have received these letters, there has, to date, been no city that has ever been successful in a final court decision defending itself against one of these Voting Rights Act lawsuits. And there have been several cities that have tried, and they've been, unfortunately, they've received multimillion-dollar court awards that have been ordered for them to pay to the plaintiff's attorney who files this type of lawsuit. Just for example, the city of Palmdale was one of the first cities that attempted to defend itself against one of these claims. And at the end of the trial, Palmdale ended up settling for $4.5 million in attorney's fees that they paid to the plaintiff's attorney. The city of Modesto also attempted early on and ended up paying $3 million in attorney's fees. And all the way up till recently, in 2019, the city of Santa Clara in the Bay Area was ordered to pay $3.3 million in attorney's fees. And the city of Anaheim paid $1.2 million. Closer to home here, the city of Whittier was ordered by a court to pay $1 million in attorney's fees when they attempted to defend themselves against this kind of Voting Rights Act lawsuit. And these are just some examples of the cities that have gone to court on these issues. In addition to those attorney's fees that the court orders the city to pay, the city, of course, also has to pay its own attorney's fees in defending itself against the lawsuit like this. And then in addition, the city is, in all of these circumstances, has been ordered to transition to district elections anyway, even after paying the attorney's fees and fighting in court. So we have an interesting, unique situation this year in San Dimas. We've received a letter from Mr. Schenkman, just like all the other cities did, but it happens to be the year before, it's the year of a census, the 2020 census. And the census results are going to come out next year in 2021. So, and our next city election is not until 2022. So what this means is, if we were to, assuming the council was going to decide to transition to districts, which is not, you know, not something that the council has to decide tonight, but if the council were going to do that in response to this letter, we would have to comply with the, we'd have to go to districts within the 90-day safe harbor period. But if we did that over the next 90 days or so, then we, that map that the council decides to adopt, when we adopt our ordinance to transition to districts, would never be used in any election. It would never be used in any city of San Dimas election because the new census results are going to come out next year. And when the new census results come out, the state law says that we would have to redistrict, adopt a new map using the 2020 census results that just came out. So that seems to be nonsensical. It doesn't seem to make any sense to adopt a map this year that is never going to be used in any election. And so what makes sense is to postpone this decision about whether we're going to transition to district elections or not. Postpone that decision until after the 2020 census results are released. Now, the 2020 census results originally were expected to be released at the end of March 2021, but because of COVID-19, the Census Bureau was, they had a little pause in their taking of the census this year, and they expect that that's going to delay the release of the census results until July 31, 2021. So I have talked to the plaintiff's attorney that sent this letter to the city about a settlement agreement, which would allow us to postpone this decision that the city council will eventually have to make on whether to transition to district elections or not. To postpone that decision until after the 2020 census results are released in the middle of next year. And then the council can decide at that time to transition to districts, hold the four public hearings, have the public give their input on whether the council should switch to district elections, have the public give their input on proposed maps that we will develop after the census results come out, and then make a final decision. What the settlement result, sorry, the settlement agreement requires is that in order to get that extension of time, the city council must adopt a resolution of intent to transition to districts by September 8. And that is only a resolution of intent. It is not a binding resolution saying that you will adopt the ordinance transitioning to districts. It is solely a resolution of intent by September 8. So that is the next council meeting. What that means is, if the council decided that they wanted to, for any reason, continue this item tonight to the next meeting, we have time to do that. In addition to that, after adopting the resolution of intent by September 8, the settlement agreement says that the city will pay the $30,000 to the plaintiff, and in exchange for that, the plaintiff will waive its right to sue, to file a lawsuit against the city until December 31, 2021. So that will give us time to make our final decision by the end of 2021, after the census results come out. If we end up adopting an ordinance transitioning to districts at the end of 2021, we will not owe another $30,000 to Mr. Schenkman. That'll just be it. We won't owe any more money to Mr. Schenkman. And if we do not adopt the ordinance transitioning to districts by the end of 2021, then Mr. Schenkman will be able to sue us after December 31, 2021, and there will be no cap on the attorney's fees award that he can collect if he's successful in the lawsuit. There is a very recent update in the law regarding the California Voting Rights Act. I said earlier that there has never been any city that has been successful defending itself in a final decision in court. That is still true, but on July 9, 2020, the California Court of Appeal issued a very important ruling in a case brought by Mr. Schenkman, the same attorney that is sending us our letter, against the city of Santa Monica. In that city of Santa Monica case, the trial court, the lowest court, had originally held that, just like all the other cities, that their at-large system of voting for their council members violates the California Voting Rights Act because it prevented Latino voters from electing a candidate of their choice. And Mr. Schenkman then applied for a $22 million attorney's fees award to the trial court that he said he was entitled to for all of his expenses in litigating against Santa Monica. The city of Santa Monica appealed to the Court of Appeal, and on July 9, the Court of Appeal overturned, reversed, the trial court's opinion. The Court of Appeal held that Santa Monica's at-large system of voting does not violate the California Voting Rights Act because the most heavily Latino district that it is possible to draw in Santa Monica, according to the experts that testified in the case, the most heavily Latino district possible is 30% Latino in Santa Monica. So the Court of Appeal held that even if Santa Monica were to transition to district elections, that would not be likely to make a difference in electoral results for Latinos in Santa Monica because the most heavily Latino district possible is only 30% Latino. So that is not a final decision because there is still the California Supreme Court that could weigh in and reverse the Court of Appeal. And Mr. Schenkman has filed a petition for review in the California Supreme Court. He filed that on August 18, and that petition for review is currently pending. Within a few months from now, according to the Supreme Court's normal rules, which, under COVID-19, there are internal deadlines, but according to the Supreme Court's normal rules, it will decide whether to take the case within about 90 days from now. And then if it does decide to take that case, it will decide the appeal in the Santa Monica case within one to two years. So it is unknown at this time whether that Santa Monica Court of Appeal opinion is going to remain the law and be upheld by the Supreme Court, or whether the Supreme Court is going to overturn that Santa Monica Court of Appeal opinion. For that reason, and additionally because it is difficult to assess whether San Dimas may be successful in any California Voting Rights Act lawsuit without having the 2020 census results yet, they have not been released yet, we don't have them, and because it does not make any sense to adopt a map this year based on the 2010 census, which map is never going to be used in any election, and because the amount that we would pay Mr. Schenkman under this settlement agreement is $30,000, which is the same amount that we would pay if we did end up transitioning to districts at the end of 2021. The recommendation is to enter this settlement agreement with Mr. Schenkman and postpone the council's decision on whether to transition to districts until the second half of 2021, after the 2020 census results are released. So with that, that concludes my staff report. The resolution, so I guess there's two actions tonight. The first action would be to approve the settlement agreement, and then under the settlement agreement, we would have to adopt the resolution of intent by September 8. And so that's teed up for the council to adopt tonight also. The settlement agreement is attached as attachment B to the staff report, and the resolution of intent is attached as attachment C. So it is a long staff report. I attempted to be thorough and also clear, so I am available for questions if the council has any, and that concludes the staff report.
Questions?
John?
No, I don't have any questions. I understand what the lawsuit is and, yeah.
Dennis?
Your report was very, very good. It was thorough, and I think the public should know that, at least as one council member, and I think we all feel the same way, we're not happy to do this, but we're kind of forced into it because of the possibility of, if we lose, it'd cost us one, two, three, four, five million dollars. So I will be voting in favor of this, but not happily.
I think that's about the gist of it for me as well. This is kind of under duress, but I really do think that the recommendation is in the best interest of the city, buys us some time. And I guess the unfortunate part is, from what I've seen in neighboring cities, I don't know that the alternative of district elections really solves anything or, you know, potentially, you know, fixes the perceived problem in this case, but, you know, it's an unfortunate place to be, but I think this is in the best interest of the city moving forward.
Ryan?
Wasn't going to say anything, but since everyone else is jumping in on it, I'll echo Dennis's comments. I'm very disappointed, specifically in Mr. Schenkman's letter and his charge against this community. I think it's baseless. I think it's repulsive, and I just frankly don't believe it fixes what the intent was of the California Voting Rights Act. To that end, I also understand the challenges with this and the money that's there. And to be honest, if there wasn't a letter or a threat of litigation, I probably wouldn't have had a problem discussing this under a different context. I think, you know, if it had been approached differently, it might have been worth discussing. But just the letter itself, I would suggest to the community that you go and you read that letter and take some time to read the staff report and really understand what this is about. Unfortunately, I'll join my colleagues in supporting this, and I look forward to the California Supreme Court's decision related to Santa Monica, and wish them well, hope they're successful, and then we can see where we're at in 2021.
Yeah, I believe all we need, we have to wait around and see what the Supreme Court does, and we hope that they move in faster than they normally move, because otherwise we'll run out of time before they make that decision. I have one question of the city attorney. When we talked about four public hearings, I was under the impression that we do the four public hearings, really was the only thing that was involved in that was to discuss the boundaries, and that, I thought I heard when you said that we could hear if the community was in favor of this or not. I'm not sure that I understood that in our prior conversations. I thought that those public hearings were strictly to discuss. I thought that those public hearings were strictly to discuss the boundaries that were drawn by, you know, whoever we hired to do that.
They are to discuss the boundaries, but also, at the same time, the public can give input on whether you should go to districts or not, because when you're holding those public hearings, you haven't made the decision yet whether to go to districts. So that decision comes after all four public hearings. So you still could hold all four of those public hearings, and like the public comments on a map, and then you decide you don't want to adopt the ordinance to go to districts.
So if we... In our particular case, we can't hold off, but if we decided that if we held off, if we had, say if we had an election between now and that period of time, okay, could we send it out to the electorate to do that?
I don't know if I understand the question.
Okay, we have an election in 2022.
Right.
Okay, say we had the election in 2021.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and so we have some time. If the electorate, if we sent it out on the 2021 ballot, say, a special election or something like that, is that something that could be done, an election?
If you wanted the voters to decide whether to go to districts or not?
Right.
That is something that can be done. However, it is very risky, because if you send it to the voters and the voters say they do not want to go to districts, then you are opening yourself up to a lawsuit with no cap on attorneys.
Understand.
Right.
Understand.
Mr. Mayor, you mentioned questions. I do have some comments.
Sure.
Sure. So as Ryan alluded to, there may be good reasons to go to districts, and so having a discussion about that isn't necessarily a bad thing. But I don't like the state or an attorney telling us that we have to do it, and especially since the grounds, I think, are a little shaky, at least for San Dimas. I don't agree with Mr. Shankman's contention. I mean, just to come right down to it, he's basically saying that Latinos vote for, only vote for Latinos, and anybody who's not a Latino never votes for a Latino. That's just stupid, completely stupid. And if you do agree with that logic, then it really is a disservice to any Latino who doesn't live in the district that's all, you know, that's heavily Latino. All of a sudden, you've got people who might want to run and who did run in the last election, who will be in districts that aren't the one that can elect a Latino supposedly. Of course, we all know you could elect anybody from any district, but I totally disagree, and I'm, you know, a little offended by the lawsuit. But as everybody else says, the prudent thing to do is to spend the $30,000 and protect ourselves from millions of dollars down the road.
And along with that, we'd be hiring a firm to actually give us the demographics for the entire city and give us potential guidelines for the districts. So it's hard to say what those districts would be until the demographics come back, but we'd be hiring a professional company that does that, so we'd have an idea. So it's not easy just to say Villa Verde's going to be, you know, a district, and Tiburon's going to be a district, and downtown's going to be a district, and we don't know how those lines are all going to pan out. So any further discussions from a public hearing? Okay, right this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone has any questions, please call, and we'll give it a few minutes to see if you guys call in. And the phone number's on the television set.
While we're waiting, I'm just going to add on to what John said. It is interesting that when it goes to districts, you know, if you really think through it, you know, and as I've heard from even candidates in the last election, this isn't advantageous for them. A lot of them feel it's actually potentially going to hurt them in the next time they run. And, you know, it's interesting that right now, we're an at-large council, and most people come over here and say we all are supposed to represent everyone in the community, but I fear when you see districts, it's really going to come down to people representing their districts and their district interests. And, you know, and that can definitely change the dynamic of the city. And I just, I don't think that's... I just don't think that's good for our community, but, like you said, it is what it is.
Well, I think that councils, each individual council person's going to have to be stronger to try to convince everybody else to give them what he wants, what he needs for his district, which is sad, because normally, we all look together trying to, you know, make sure that we're all working for the right direction for everybody, but you're absolutely right. It will change the dynamic... Never mind.
Well...
Dynamics.
I will say this, that the voters are generally smart, and if candidates are aboveboard and especially based on their records, hopefully, people who are elected are looking out for the interest of the entire city. I mean, that's just... That's almost like a number-one litmus test to elect somebody to the San Dimas City Council. And so, you know, as years go on, whenever this is happening, I would definitely...
I agree.
Definitely, that would be something I would be...
I can tell you, this council, as far as I'm concerned, looks at every corner and every... Is considered of every citizen, and I think that's greatly appreciated by the entire city.
Exactly.
John?
Okay, go ahead, ma'am. You're live.
I have some questions about how this is presented. Is there saying that if we break our city up into districts, are they thinking that the minorities, the Hispanic people, are living in just one area of the city? Because is there really a need to break up the city if we have Hispanic families living throughout the entire city? And also, how do we have equality and representation if we have no people of color running for the office? And I've heard that there is an issue sometimes with the high fees. And also, how do we present any of these concerns that we have in the representation of our city? If the entire city is white, are there different categories or city considerations or anything that can be presented regarding this? That was my question. So if you could answer those, that would be great. Thank you.
Jeff, can you answer that lady's question, please?
Well, I think they are pretty good points about whether there is logic behind this California Voting Rights Act, which seems to say that if you break a city into districts, that it will increase the likelihood that a protected class of voters will be able to elect the candidate of their choice. As points were made by a couple of council members just now, that is not necessarily a logical conclusion of transitioning a city to district elections. If you just think about it in a common sense way, because of the way, you know, the racial makeup of where citizens live in a city, it doesn't necessarily mean that protected classes will be more likely to be elected. So I think that's a good point by the speaker, but we have the state law that we have, and we have to deal with the consequences unless that state law is changed.
Thank you. Ma'am, did that answer your question? If you're not there. Okay, anybody else? Give it about 30 seconds.
Mayor, I have a question for the city attorney. When you talked about the public hearings and for the public to give input about drawing the maps, isn't there part of that process where the public also takes part in drawing their maps and their suggestions of what the mapping should be?
Yes. When we get into that process, the public is actually able to draw their own maps and submit them for the council's consideration, in addition to the maps that are going to be drawn and submitted by the demographer that the city will eventually hire if we go forward with this process. And so, yes, that is true.
Thank you. Nothing? All right, I'll bring it back to the council for comments.
I'll just say one last thing on kind of what John was talking about. You know, districting in the context of its functionality, and I'm sure we'll have a fun discussion about this at some point later on, but, you know, in a time when we're looking at downtown, in a time when we're looking at Rena and things like that, you know, districts, when you have districts that are a majority going to be single-family homes, zoned, and then you have a downtown area that will likely end up being a majority, one district, you know, you're going to have a council that's going to be looking at that, and like you said, making decisions for the best interest of the community. So to me, when you look at that, and then you look at like another example, might be a special water district, for example, and another project somewhere else that has to deal with basins and things like this, right? It's just fascinating when you actually apply the context of what district dynamics can do. And of course, we're all going to be held to task by the people really in that district, not just the community at large, right, but whoever lives there, you know, is going to be kind of caught up. So I don't know. Can't wait.
I can. All right. Do I have a motion?
Well, I would make a motion that we approve the conditional settlement agreement and adopt the resolution. I don't have the number. Resolution 2020-50, I guess it is, declaring our intention to transition from at-large to district-based city council elections. And I'm sorry, I guess I've got to read the title before I actually make that motion.
Resolution 2020-50, declaring intention to transition from at-large to district-based city council elections.
And I move away from the reading on that resolution.
I second it.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, counsel.
COVID-19 update. Staff?
Yes, Mayor and City Council. COVID update. We're entering our sixth month of COVID-19 pandemic, and since March, we've faced unprecedented times. And unfortunately, it doesn't appear that it's going away anytime soon. The city continues to follow LA County guidelines, and we're putting out information daily on any updates, any changes to those guidelines. We're also updating our business and residential resource pages as those new programs come out, or those programs change, or eligibility changes. All that information is being pushed out. We're putting it on our social media. It's on our website. One of the programs I want to highlight is our Emergency Rental Assistance Program. This is funded through CBG Cares Act, which is about $66,000 available for rental assistance. It's $500 per month for up to three months, which is $1,500 for rental assistance eligible households. There's five requirements. They have to reside in San Dimas, have proof of income that is at or below the state income level limits, must be financially impacted due to COVID-19 pandemic, rent a single-family home, multi-family unit or mobile home in San Dimas, and have a current residential lease. So far, we have approved $25,000 in rental assistance with $12,000 still in applications that are being reviewed. So I want to highlight, there's information that we're sending out on social media, on our website, so if that's something of interest to anybody in the community, please call the city. As of today, I know there's a lot of talks about numbers, but there is a dashboard that LA County Public Health puts out. And according to that dashboard, there are 457 total reported cases in San Dimas, 5,583 tests that have been conducted, and there have been a total of 11 deaths in San Dimas. So for a full summary, and it's really a pretty neat dashboard that they put, you can select other cities and see how, what other cities' numbers are, and really dive into the numbers. That can be found on the LA County's COVID-19 Disaster Response Dashboard. With that, that concludes my COVID-19 update.
Questions?
Are we... We're still... The San Dimas Cares Program's still going on, feeding people and getting groceries out to people that need it?
Yes, that's correct. We're still collecting food and providing meals to the community.
I'd like to thank the staff for that and the volunteers, please.
Do you know by chance, Brad, how many of the salons have opened up? I know I've seen two, at least, that I've seen on San Dimas Avenue, north and south of Bonita. Are you aware of any others?
I don't have those numbers, but I can give the council, and I can find out and provide an update on that.
Yeah, that'd be good. I know inquiring minds have asked where they can go get their nails done and what have you, and I do appreciate the businesses. I know one small business on south of Commercial Street on the west side has been open doing nails and what have you outside. And I know the salon to the north, just by the old sheriff's station on San Dimas Avenue, has put up lattice and has been out there, I think by appointments, taking care of that. So we've had no issues, though, with any of our barber shops or salons operating?
No, no issues.
Good. Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a nail salon up in Villa Verde that maybe we've got three or four little booths out there, right in front of their businesses, appear to be pretty busy. So as you know, I get phone calls every day saying, "When are you going to open up this or open up that?" And once again, I just need to remind people, we can make policies stronger, stricter, but we can't make them any less than the county. So we're totally governed by what the state is telling the county, and the county's telling us. So the idea that this council can open up businesses is just not true. We can't do it. But with that all being said, our city manager is on conference calls, Zoom calls, all the time, and he's requesting more and more pushing and prodding them to open up more businesses. Without being said, when we talk about opening up businesses, has anyone really truly driven around and started to look at how many of our restaurants have started to figure out how to open up, open their businesses out on the sidewalks, get them into the parking lots? They've been talking to their owners of the parking lots. They're all throwing canopies up, making it as convenient as possible. So we have several, several restaurants in town now that are open, and I think I even have some of them are contacting me and saying, "Hey, when this is over with, can we talk about outside dining a little more?" So I think we're going to have a little activity of trying to figure out who wants to continue to serve outside. But it is not remarkable, but it's... It is very nice to see how people have started to continue to work through this. This COVID-19 thing is obviously a nightmare, but people are starting to realize that they still need to make a living, and they're doing things that the community accepts. And with that all being said, we need to thank the community itself for supporting these businesses. They really, truly have gone out of their way to make sure that they go out, pick up food, take it home, do it out. And so many businesses are saying, "Thank you to the community for supporting us," realizing that we don't have a leg to stand on unless we get, you know, your support. So I want to thank the community for doing that.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one thing on the COVID-19 piece? I heard from somebody who works in the community, and I'm just going to put this out there as just general information for members of the community as it relates to modified work schedules as well as education being deployed in a mobile platform. Someone called me after their youngster started school earlier, I think it was this week. Yeah, no, last week. I'm sorry. It was late last week. And kind of a unique scenario, and I'm just going to share this for the benefit of those of you that are at home who are dealing with either telecommuting from home, or you're dealing with having a child who you're now having to deal with Zoom remote learning. I would caution you to learn from this that a young person, they don't go to school in this district, but their parent does work here in the city, not for the city, but with does work here in the city, not for the city, but within our city. And their young person was in class and had a, had something in the background while they were in class, and became the victim of cyberbullying. And it even went so far as to turn into something where the teacher felt concerned for that person's safety. And in another place, in another state, actually, there was an instance where a young person started school, and the person in the background had, like my grandfather had, a case of hunting rifles, which in different places wouldn't really be that big of a deal. But the teacher saw the hunting rifle case in the background during the class, and basically notified local authorities, and subsequently resulted in a visit and notification of Protective Services and a whole bunch of other stuff. So, point is, as it relates to Fourth Amendment search and seizure, and for your own privacy at home while you have youngsters in school, realize that your teachers are being invited into your home. And so if you have a youngster who is going to school, and they're going to be in front of a teacher who is a mandated reporter and what have you, be mindful, maybe set up a little space for them to do their classes, you know, that is not an invasion of your privacy, or your religion, or any of your protected rights, so that you can have a educational prosperous experience without having your personal privacy invaded. So that's my PSA for, for those of you, I was kind of shocked to have heard that from a member of the community that works here, that his daughter became a victim of cyberbullying for having something in the background, which wasn't as extreme as the other example, but you can Google the other example. But this one did happen to somebody who, whose daughter goes to school around. So anyways, be mindful, it's a different world we live in, and it's sometimes the things you don't even think about in the context of trying to make something work that are just unintended consequences, I think. So, thanks.
Okay, any other, any further? COVID, our goal, goal line update, please?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, Gladstone Street east of Costco remains closed due to goal line work. The streets remain closed through September 30th. The current work includes installation of traffic signal conduit, storm drain, pipe, catch basins, and water main work. The contractor is also conducting water infiltration testing at various locations along the railway right-of-way. The goal line authority has delayed the removal of trees in the rail, railroad right-of-way from Cataract to Monavista. They are scheduling clearing the brush from this area later this week, or at the latest next week. Tree removal for the project corridor are estimated to begin in October or November. So they're, they've agreed to push off any major tree removal that has to happen because of the project to as late as possible, so the community can still enjoy the trees that are there. The contractor will be receiving shipment of rail in the next week or so. The rail lengths are 2,000 feet, and will require three to five-minute closures, street closures when the rail's being delivered because of the length of the, the rail that's coming. The schedule for the stiller has not been permanently identified, but it should be coming soon. The tentative closure schedule, like I mentioned, Gladstone's closed till September 30th, Euclid Avenue, north of Bonita, from December through early March 2021. Cataract Avenue, Bonita, will begin in late March 21 through September of 21. Walnut Avenue, south of Bonita, will begin in May of 2021 through July of 2021. San Dimas Canyon Road, north of Arrow Highway, begins July of 2021 through October of 2021. And San Dimas Avenue, south of Bonita, is scheduled between October 2021 through December of 2021. The above closure timeframes are tentative, with the exception of Gladstone, which is of course closed. There will also be work done on the railroad corridor during the project. And the contractor just closed Brink Avenue in Glendora as well. So that concludes my goal line update.
Thank you. Any questions?
What was the Cataract-Bonita tentative date?
Cataract Avenue, Bonita, late March 2021 through September of 2021. And again, these are tentative, but this is, this is the best they have for their schedule.
So we're talking about six months?
Yes.
For that closure?
Mm-hmm.
That might be a good opportunity to bring the restaurants out onto the street and just close the whole street down there.
Might be. All right, any further questions? Okay, oral communications, members of the audience, speakers are limited to five minutes or, or may be determined by the chair. Do we have any callers?
No.
Okay, we'll give it a couple of minutes. Do you have some?
No.
No? Anybody wish to go a little further? John?
How about one more minute, Mayor?
Hold on.
Okay. Thank you for calling. Your five minutes starts now.
Hi there. I was just calling to say thank you on behalf of many people in the community for moving forward with the exclusive negotiating agreement. I know a lot of people in the city are really excited about the possibility of the Pioneer Square project, and we're excited for even more people to hear about it. And it sounds like there may be opportunities for people to provide even more feedback and let the city know what they want, what they don't want. And like you said, or multiple people on council said, this is just a step, it's by no means a done deal. We are excited about this, a lot of us are, and I just wanted to express our gratitude. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you. One thing we might add, that we, we do know that the developer is actually in the process of starting to plan some more community outreach, and so listen for that. We'll make sure that it's posted on the city's website, and, so that the whole community can come out and voice what they, what they'd like to see there, in the, in the way of restaurants, or activities, or things like that. But he has committed to continue his outreach. Okay? Any more questions?
No more calls.
Okay, I'm going to give it about 30 seconds. All right, let's move forward. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, City Council. Over the last three days of the city's week-long birthday celebration, the city successfully coordinated drive-in events. The events were a citywide team effort, involved every department. And to provide a summary, which I believe the council had requested, on the number of attendance, results of the follow-up survey that, that staff conducted, I'm going to have our Parks and Rec Director, Hector Kissimmee, come up and give a quick presentation on that.
Hey, Brad. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So a few weeks ago, earlier this, this month, there were, the, the city held a drive-in event at Horse East Canyon Park over three days. And as City Manager Brad McKinnney stated, the council was interested in, in getting some information on the results of the participation of the event, as well as some additional data that was provided via a survey that was taken. Next slide, please. So I just, this slide represents how we come up with the, the planning and execution of our city events, and then also how we, after an event, review and come up with the mechanism to move, move ahead and improve on such events. So based around the city's mission statement, the, which, I'm going to take a phrase out of it, which is, "The city serves as a resource, giving all people a sense of belonging to the city through programs, organizations, and activities." So using that as the relation to the mission statement for what we do, we have our guiding principles, which are unfortunately a little fuzzy up there, but they, they are community, metrics, staff development, technology, good governance. Then they drive our goals, which are on the left, and then those goals are carried out through our strategies, all encompassed through the performance management cycle. Next slide, please. Here's an example of using data and metrics to guide our decision-making. On Thursday night, we had 84 participants. On Friday, we had 101 with a waitlist of 67, though not all who registered actually came up. So that's why there were some empty spots out there. Back to the Future got 105 with a waitlist of 47. Now, some people did go up and then take advantage of the fact that there were some slots available, and were able to enter the event and watch the movie for that night. Next slide, please. From the survey, which included a population of 130, we received 109 comments, so about an 84% response rate. And we created this word cloud to highlight some of the comments that came out the most. These word clouds sort of pick up the, the trends, those things that are said most about the event. As you can see, it appears that people really enjoyed the event, code saying great, thanks, more, it's fun, again. So the overwhelming response was that people want to see more of these events. Next slide, please. This slide here was to represent what movie they, they attended of those who responded. The Sandlot are Friday night getting the most. But what this slide also represents is that we, as part of our process, we engage stakeholders. So stakeholder engagement to find out like what they like, what, what things are, you know, they're looking for. One thing that was also made clear through the responses was that even though these movies are great and they're classics, people would like to see, residents would like to see more current films. Next slide, please. Overall, we got outstanding rating, so five, five stars being the average. And the picture of staff there next to the DeLorean from, that is a replica of the actual DeLorean used in the movie, is to take into account the staff development, the leadership, and the execution that goes into these events. Next slide, please. So we also wanted to know how many people were in the vehicle, so that we can tally up an overall attendance number. For the most part, 36%, so the majority of folks who went up there had four, four people per vehicle, which takes us to about 1,300-plus participants who enjoyed that night. And then the, the guiding principle there is good governance, because, you know, overall, we want to see how we better serve the community using the resources that we're given to serve as many as possible. Next slide, please. Another question that was asked was what concession stands did you visit? So if you didn't enjoy the cheddar wheel food truck, which I thought was awesome, you had a chance to also take in the ice cream that was available, and also the snack bar that was put on by the Chamber of Commerce. Many people there did not, majority of them did not visit a concession stand. And so a follow-up question would be like, what would you like to see there? Or, or maybe, did you bring your own food, which we think a lot of people brought their own food, not really knowing that there would be stuff to eat up there, or available stuff to eat. Next slide. So the question of how often would you like to have drive-ins is overwhelmingly monthly. Now, holding events up there monthly would take a lot of effort, resources, but that is what the community is, at least from this survey, overwhelmingly saying monthly. And the, the, the strategy there is to establish a vision, the little bubble on, on the left. Next slide, please. Would you be interested in themed drive-ins? So say we're doing a Halloween movie, you know, that people would dress up for Halloween, or in costume, or if we were doing a Western theme, people would dress up in cowboy, you know, costumes. And 96% of the respondents said yes.
Everyone wants to wear a mask.
That's true. That's true. So ultimately, the performance management cycle, which is to strategize, develop, implement, and monitor and improve, go into our events and in planning for events, so that we can give the community a better event next time we do something such as this. Next slide. And that wraps that up, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, should you have any.
Well, I know it's been said before, Hector, but just congratulations and thanks to, to you and the entire staff, entire city staff, and everybody who worked on that. It, it came out great. So thank you.
Thank you. It was a, a very collaborative effort. Members of, of, you know, intra-departmental efforts were put into place. We couldn't have done it without Public Works and their assistance with the, with the plan, you know, the, the traffic safety plan, and all the other efforts from all of the other members of staff, as well as volunteers, and of course, the Chamber of Commerce.
Sheriff's Department was involved.
Absolutely. We had, we had quite a presence there from the Sheriff's Department. We were glad to see them there.
All great, thanks.
I'll say, I have to laugh because I remember Eric and I chugging down a beer, talking about this, and then, you know, giving you a, a phone call late on, on that particular evening, only to learn after we had our brilliant idea that turns out you had already been in the works with your staff on getting something like that going. And I think that really speaks to the vision, and I think your ability and, and the city manager's ability to be able to be looking at what the community wants, what the council wants, and to be able to be thinking one step ahead to deliver something that would be well-received by the community. So I commend you and your department, and Brad, and everyone that was involved in this, all the directors and the staff that made this thing awesome. Has it been more than two weeks since we did this?
It'll be two weeks this coming Friday, Thursday, this coming Thursday.
Which means that any contact tracing should have occurred by now. Are we aware of anyone becoming ill related to this event?
I'm, I'm unaware.
Right. So we should, I mean, the city, basically, we should have been made aware, at least at this point, should somebody have been linked back to it. So I do know, having been there, that folks were physically distancing, and they were doing what they needed to do to stay safe within their family units, and it looked like their members of their households or their families. And I'm really proud of everybody, and I, and that means the community too, because frankly, to pull this off during this time was a challenge. But I think watching people go and, and have their families out, I, I can't tell you, and I know other members of council have said it, just it was so well-received, and I sincerely hope we do do this again. And then, I think we talked about it, but we purchased the equipment, correct?
That is correct.
So the screens, the projectors, all that stuff. So I think we could probably have some pretty cool, even if we don't do movies, which I'm hoping there's interest maybe on the council to explore that, and maybe, you know, you look at, you know, what, what that looks like for your department, and, you know, Brad, and you guys come up with some sort of plan. But I think it's exciting, too, to think about the possibilities of what you can do with that equipment for something as simple as maybe music in the park, or any of the other many events that we have in the, in the community, so.
Absolutely. And just- Absolutely, and just to let the, the cat out of the bag, the upcoming Halloween Spooktacular event, which will take place in October, late October, 23rd and 24th, so the week before, the weekend before the actual Halloween event, we are planning another one of these events. And I don't want to give too many details, but the, the planning committee today kind of wrapped up what we're going to do, and it's, and it's good. So just to keep you, you know, in suspense here for a couple months.
To keep people in their cars and locking their doors?
Sorry.
Just keep people in their cars and locking their doors? You're not going to run around with like a Jason mask on during the movie?
No running around, just walking around.
Oh, man.
Yes.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Thank you. You know, I know you have several things going, and, you know, the Hollywood, Halloween Spectacular and Extravaganza coming on, but there is one event that's, there's been conversation about?
Yes.
National Night Out.
Absolutely.
Have you guys started to finalize some, some plans for that, or?
Yes. Yes, so the, again, the planning committee, which consists of the LA County Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, the Chamber of Commerce, and city staff have, Captain Bird, did I miss anyone? I think that's it. Oh, the Heroes Organization. We have, again, the event was scheduled for October 6th, but because of the current restrictions that we think are not going to change by that date, we are going to do something that is again, more virtual. There's going to be a caravan that goes around town and visiting the different districts or zones throughout the, the city, and then culminating up at Horse Deep Canyon Park with an opportunity for public safety to showcase some of their vehicles, and also to be up there and, and give away some, a little goodie bag with some, some things for the kids to enjoy.
Super. The goodie bag thing, I, I do want to say about the drive-in, the three days you guys had the drive-in, each night you had something dealing with, with the movie. I think that people just were fascinated about what you guys gave, the smores and the brownies and, and things like that. It was unbelievable thinking on, on your staff's part, and I just, just want to say thank you. You guys made us look good as a city, but you made yourselves look great, and thank you guys very much.
Well, it, it's all for the community, but thank you very much, Mayor, and just all credit to the team, you know, they, they're the creative ones, and, you know, they, they do make us all look good. I'm very proud of that team. They've accomplished a lot in the last few years, and, and I think that they are willing to, again, go the extra mile to do even more of those events.
Super, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more, Derek?
No, that, that concludes.
City Attorney?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Members of the council, first off, any meetings attended at the expense of the local Hearing none. John?
Oh, well, first off, appreciate staff providing this plexiglass barrier, and could you guys hear me okay?
I hear you fine.
Okay, great, great. I don't know if next week I can move back to my regular spot and do the plexiglass on both sides and take it from there. I think it's working out pretty good. I can hear Ryan just fine, and I can see him just great too, so. So yeah, so I appreciate staff providing that and, and the, that idea. The only other thing I have is that earlier this month, we got a, a letter from the Festival of Arts with sort of some sad news that the organization looks like it's, it's not going to be around much longer. Dennis can probably talk more about this, but I just wanted to put it on our radar that I'd like to have like some kind of proclamation expressing our appreciation for all the years that, that they gave us. And if, it, it kind of would make sense and would be nice if we waited until we could actually, assuming it's in the next six months or so, we could actually have them come and be in person. So when we are able to have public re, be at the meeting, or do an alternative and take the meeting outside for a little while for that kind of proclamation. But they've been such a, a presence in the city for, for 45 years, and so I think we really want to express how much we appreciate everything they've done.
Thank you, John. I, I agree. We really do need some type of recognition, so recession, recession, a reception later down the line would probably play off good, because in 44 years, there were a lot of very active people who were very supportive of the community, and I think, you know, it'd be fitting of the city to say thank you. So Dennis?
I agree.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, just briefly, this is extremely important. I participated in a Zoom meeting with the LA County Health Department, and the supervisor spoke, and they're really concerned about this flu season coming up, and, you know, between 50 and 60,000 people die in the United States every year because of the flu. And what they're really concerned about is COVID-19 and the flu. If you get that, it's not like one and one, it equals two, it's one and one equals about 10. It's very dangerous. Either if you have the flu or COVID-19, you get the other one, it's extremely dangerous. And what they're trying to push is everyone to get the flu vaccine. And actually Kaiser has already started to give out the flu vaccine, and, but you don't want to get them both, because it's really a serious situation. That's it.
Thank you. Right, or Ron. Eric, I'm sorry.
Well, I've just got two things, I guess. First one, last week after our council meeting was a milestone birthday for a San Dimas resident. Carl Harstein was a, or is a World War II Marine veteran and a San Dimas Heroes Committee member, and he celebrated his 95th birthday, which is a huge deal. And I just wanted to say that I wish him a happy birthday. I've seen him active not only here in San Dimas, but also all over the eastern San Gabriel Valley, and Glendora, and Laverne, and such. He really is an amazing guy that's accomplished a lot in his life, and he's worked to raise money for multiple veterans' causes, which is very near and dear to me. So happy birthday, Carl. And then, something that is also near and dear to me now, which is school season starting. This is the first year that my son will be in Benita USD, and this week has been very challenging for me and my wife, and I'm assuming it is for everybody else in the community with school-aged kids. We've been setting aside classroom spaces in our house, you know, squaring away work schedules and seeing how we're going to deal with this for the past few weeks. It's been, to be honest, pretty stressful. But I want to wish all of these students that are returning to school a successful school year, and it will definitely be one for everybody to remember, that is for sure.
Right?
All right. Well, one is, there is a noticeable difference in the sound in hearing you, to be honest. It's deafening. It actually does take you down a bit. I agreed to compromise for the experiment. My preference frankly would be if you're going to, if we're going to, if the intent's going to be to put two screens up, I'd rather just keep this the same, as not to have unobstructed view either, because that's going to be a second piece of glass here, which is further going to muffle from where that seat is. I'm happy to come and experiment with that too. But anyways, that's my thoughts.
Try it next time, and if it doesn't work out, that's fine.
Okay, cool. Then something else. I had the opportunity to go see Rail Propulsion Systems. They're a company who actually has one of the properties in SP 23, the furthest west property, and took some time about a, I think last week on Wednesday, and went out to their rail yard out in Fullerton, and had the opportunity to see the world's, what they described as the world's first all-electric battery-operated locomotive. Pretty awesome thing to see, had the opportunity to sit inside that thing and actually sit in the pilot's seat, or whatever you call it, of the locomotive, and they fired it up, and also had the opportunity to go on to a very older locomotive, kind of a locomotive boneyard out where they have this place, and see some of these things. Hopefully, they'll be able to get that locomotive active with MetroLink in the near future. And I know Mayor Alwolos in Glendora has been an advocate trying to build a bridge with MetroLink to see if they can do that. That company is looking to further expand their operation here in San Dimas on their existing property where they're at. I think they, having had the opportunity to look at some of the pretty awesome technology they're doing, they do scale up technology, and they have some things that I think will change the course and the landscape of locomotive transportation, as well as the delivery of utilities that support things such as light rail, or maybe even a MetroLink locomotive. So very cool stuff, and learned a lot, and so I'm looking forward to that company continuing to be a part of this community, and they desire to continue to work with us here and expand, so I hope we're supportive of that. The only other thing I'm going to say is, election season is here, presidential election season. It's already silly season enough when we have our own elections here in the city, or even on the school board. I've been reading a lot of the comments online, and I'm not just talking about ones directed at me, I'm just talking about comments in general, whether it's on Nextdoor, or Facebook, or Twitter. And I just would call on every person in this community to be a little bit more respectful, a little bit more tolerant, and a little bit more open-minded when interacting with other members of the community. I read so many comments and heard from so many people about the way people are treating each other, the things that they're saying to each other, and, and it's just sad. I, I just got to be honest, it's very sad. I, I just hope people are more civil with each other and more respectful of each other's views, and we live in a representative democracy. I mean, people are entitled to have their opinions and their views and their beliefs, and we're a very diverse community, both demographically, spiritually, and other. So I just hope the community comes together in that way, and as always, my phone is on and my email is up, and I'm always available to anyone that wants to talk. So with that, I hope everybody has a very blessed week.
Thanks. Thank you. John, I can, I, I hear you fine, okay? I, what, the problem more is, when I look into this glass, I see Ryan and your head. You look like a ghost, okay? I noticed that when Ryan was moving his hands, you were mov, your hands were there, it looked like he had four hands, okay? So that's, that, that's just, to me, a little distracting, but I can live with it, okay? But that's really about all I have to say.
Kind of like wearing these masks all the time. What a, what a blankety-blank pain, but you know, we need to do it.
No, it was, I, I have, if that makes you comfortable, I'm perfectly fine with it. Okay? Any other? Okay, we're going to go into closed session. It's a conference with legal, legal counsel and anticipated litigation. We have actually two cases tonight, and this meeting will be adjourned, and we'll, going to stay in this room and give you about five to seven minutes. Good night. Good night.
Stand by. Stand up again. Okay. Can I have a little mic, sorry? Okay. Go ahead and angle the camera to the attorney.
Mm-hmm. Tonight, City Council met in closed session to discuss the two closed-session items on the agenda, two significant exposures to litigation. Staff gave a report, and the council gave direction to staff, but no reportable action was taken. And the meeting is now adjourned.